Morning and welcome. At this time, I call the order in Muscogee Creek National Council, regular session, September twenty eighth, twenty twenty one. Time is you know three A M. This time, I'd like to ask Representative Charles McHenry to do the indication, but I'll leave it up to him if he wants to sing a great verse. It's up to him.
Our most gracious heavenly Father, Lord, we praise your name, give a thanks, Father, for this day that you blessed us with. Give a thanks, Father, for the life that you've given us, Father. Father, we pray that your spirit be poured down upon us, Father, as we conduct the nation's business, Father. We pray, Father, for a double portion, Father, of blessings upon our citizens, upon our tribe, Father, and we ask all these things in Jesus's name. Amen.
Roll call, next from Council Secretary, Alicia Stroh.
Speaker, Miranda Hicks. Mary Crawford.
President.
Joyce Steer.
Present.
Patrick Freeman.
Here.
Joseph Hicks.
Here.
Robert Hough.
Present.
James Jennings.
Here.
Adam Jones. Adam Jones. William Low.
Here.
Here.
Anna Marshall.
Present.
Charles McHenry.
Here.
Thomas Senior Hola Osborne.
Present.
Darryl Proctor.
Here.
Mark Randolph.
Present.
Travis Scott.
Here.
Lucian Tiger.
Present.
Adam Jones.
Here.
Speaker, you have sixteen present, zero absent.
Sixteen present, zero absent, constitute form of this assembly will be official. Prueled minutes, emergency session, August twelfth, twenty twenty one, impeachment session, August twelfth, twenty twenty one, planning session, August seventeenth, twenty twenty one, emergency session, August twenty fourth, twenty twenty one, pre-agenda, regular session, August twenty eighth, twenty twenty one.
Speaker.
Reverend Marshall.
Yes, I move that we approve the aforementioned minutes with any necessary changes.
Motion made by Representative Marshall to approve the minutes with any corrections that needed. Do I have second, sir? Second by Representative McHenry. Any discussion? Any discussion? Hearing none, roll call, please.
Anna Marshall.
Yes.
Charles McHenry.
Yes.
Thomas Senior Hola Osborne.
Yes.
Darryl Proctor.
Yes.
Mark Randolph.
Yes.
Travis Scott.
Thanks.
Lucian Tiger.
Yes.
Mary Crawford.
Yes.
Joyce Steer.
Yes.
Patrick Freeman.
Yes.
Joseph Hicks.
Yes.
Robert Hough.
Yes.
James Jennings.
Yes.
Adam Jones.
Yes.
William Low.
Yes.
Speaker, you have fourteen in favor, zero against, and one to abstain.
Fourteen in favor, zero against, one to abstain, and motion passes. Next item is order of business.
Speaker.
Representative Jones.
Thank you, Speaker. Speaker, I make a motion that we expel Representative Scott due to the impeachment process. It's Article Six, Section four B of the Constitution. Muscogee Creek Nation Council shall judge of the return to qualifications of its members, determine the rules, proceedings, penalize its members for disorderly behavior, and with the concurrence of two-thirds of the National Council, expel a member from a meeting. Thank you, Speaker.
Representative Jones, Mr. Fletcher.
Yes, sir, Speaker.
Fletcher. At this time, the motion has been made by Representative Jones to expel Representative Scott due to Article Six, Section four B. That are missable.
Well, the first and foremost, I'm not sure that I heard anybody second that motion, but assuming somebody does, then yes, I do believe that the Constitution allows this to occur.
Okay, thanks, sir. At this time, Representative Jones did make a motion to expel Representative Scott from the meeting, signing Article Six, Section four B. Will I have a second?
Speaker, I second.
And Marshall second. Any discussion? Any discussion from council? Hearing none, roll call, please.
Adam Jones.
Yes.
William Low.
Yes.
Anna Marshall.
Yes.
Charles McHenry.
No.
Thomas Senior Hola Osborne.
No.
Darryl Proctor.
Yes.
Mark Randolph.
No.
Travis Scott.
No.
Lucian Tiger.
Yes.
Mary Crawford.
Yeah.
Joyce Steer.
Yeah.
Patrick Freeman.
Yes.
Joseph Hicks.
Yes.
Robert Hough.
No.
James Jennings.
Yes.
Speaker, you have ten in favor and five against.
Ten in favor, five against, and that needed a two-thirds vote. Needed a two-third vote, was ten in favor, five against, that motion fails. NCR twenty one, zero, one, zero. A resolution of the Muscogee Creek National Council confirming Denise Henry to serve on the lot course, police command, sponsors Adam Jones the third.
Thank you, Speaker. Motion adopted.
Representative Jones made a motion to adopt NCR twenty one, zero, one, zero. Do I have a second?
Will Low second.
Pending by Representative Low, discussion.
Speaker.
Representative Jones.
Thank you. Could I ask to speak with Attorney General, Assistant Attorney General Kevin Dillinger?
AG Dillinger, are you online, sir?
Yes, sir.
Go ahead, Representative Jones, he's online.
Thank you. So, Mr. Dillinger, in the past administration, when this came up, I think.
Representative Jones. Representative Jones. Mr. Dillinger.
Yes, sir.
Same time, let me see if we can reconnect with Mr. Jones.
No problem.
Representative Jones, are you there?
Went to mute, yes, now I'm there.
Okay, there you go. Representative Jones, Mr. Dillinger, or anybody else online heard your question?
Mr. Dillinger, did you, can you help us clarify from termination, resignation from HR for Ms. Henry?
What I, what I do know, there was a meeting with, to discuss the matter, I believe at the time, Speaker Tiger was there, and Principal Chief Floyd, myself, and there may have been some other representatives there as well. And after discussing her status and her situation, the consensus of the group there was that her designation of termination would, should be, be changed to a resignation, and that was the consensus of the group.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Dillinger.
You're welcome.
Thank you, Representative Jones. Any other discussion?
Speaker, this is Thomas Senior.
Go ahead, Representative, hold on.
Is Ms. Henry on the line?
Yes, ma'am. Ms. Henry?
Yes.
Ms. Henry, I have a question for you. Do you have any kind of personal relationship or relationship with Governor Stitt?
I don't have a personal relationship. I have been to many of the governmental events that I can go to. I try to go to as many as possible. I try to go to any that I can go to that revolves, involves first responders. He has been to our gym, did some fundraisers for first responders. And so, as far as that aspect goes, yes, I've been to hear him speak, much like our Principal Chief has. I just try to go to and gather as much knowledge as I can.
Thank you, ma'am.
Thank you, Representative, you hold off one. Any other discussion?
Speaker, Travis Scott.
Go ahead, Representative Scott.
I just want some clarification from Attorney General Dillinger that she is eligible.
Mr. Dillinger.
I believe so. All I can really comment on, I guess, Representative Scott, is that at that meeting, the understanding was that her resignation would be changed from termination to resignation, so I think that would make her eligible.
Mr. Dillinger, Representative Scott.
Thank you, sir.
Any other discussion? Speaker, Representative Tiger, thank you, Speaker. Mr. Dillinger, this is Lucian.
Yes, sir.
Is there any way possible to work with the current HR to have that file corrected, because I believe the file still shows terminated. Is that not correct? Can anybody answer that for me? Anybody make HR on there? Then back to Major Josh Melissa. Mr. Dillinger, this is Lucian.
Yes, yes.
If we postpone this, if there's, if we postpone this, and Chief's in here as well, is there any way that AG's office could work with HR to get that file corrected?
I don't know if that would be our, our duty. I think when we left the meeting, that was left with the chief to make that determination as the chief and over the, with the White Horse being a member of the, or member of the cabinet. I think that was the direction we were going. I don't know if that's something we would be involved in. You might, I believe AG Wiley's on the phone. We may check with him to see what his thought is. I guess, I don't know that there'd be any problem with us doing that, but I think the direction it was originally going was that it would come through the chief's office, making a written request to have that changed.
Thank you, Mr. Dillinger. Representative Tiger.
You're welcome.
The sponsor, Representative Jones?
Yes, sir.
Would you be opposed to postponing this for one month and see if we could get Ms. Henry's file corrected?
Yes, we can. So, I make a motion, we postpone for one month.
Motion on the floor from Representative Jones is to postpone for thirty days for our next council meeting. Correct?
Yeah, that's correct.
Second by Representative Tiger. Any discussion? Any discussion? Hearing none, roll call, please. Motion is to postpone for months for the next meeting.
Lucian Tiger?
Yes.
Mary Crawford?
Yeah.
Joyce Steer?
Yeah.
Patrick Freeman?
Yes.
Joseph Hicks?
Yes.
Robert Hough?
Yes.
James Jennings?
Yes.
Adam Jones?
Yes.
William Low?
Yes.
Anna Marshall?
Yes.
Charles McHenry?
Yes.
Thomas Senior Hola Osborne?
Yes.
Darryl Proctor?
Yes.
Mark Randolph?
Yes.
Travis Scott?
Yes.
Speaker, you have fifteen in favor, zero against.
Fifteen in favor, zero against, that motion passes. TR twenty one dash one two six, a tribal resolution of the Muscogee Creek Nation, authorizing the Principal Chief to execute a certain agreement with Smith and Nephew Inc. on behalf of the Muscogee Creek Nation Department of Health, sponsored Mary Crawford.
Speaker, I make a motion to adopt.
Representative Crawford made a motion to adopt TR twenty one, one, two, six. Do I have a second?
Second, Representative Deere.
Second by Representative Deere. Any discussion? Any discussion? Hearing none, voice vote, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye, aye.
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 All who same time. The motion is adopted. TR twenty one dash one, two, seven, a tribal resolution of the Muscogee Creek Nation, confirming the nomination of Sharon Mouse to serve on the College of the Muscogee Nation Board of Regents, sponsored James Jennings. Speaker, I make a motion to adopt. Representative Jennings made a motion to adopt TR twenty one, one, two, seven. Do I have a second? Second by Representative McHenry. Discussion. Any discussion? Hearing none, roll call, please.
James Jennings?
Yes.
Adam Jones?
Yeah.
William Low?
Yes.
Anna Marshall?
Yes.
Charles McHenry?
Yes.
Thomas Senior Hola Osborne?
Yes.
Darryl Proctor?
Yes.
Mark Randolph?
Yes.
Travis Scott?
Yes.
Lucian Tiger?
Yes.
Mary Crawford?
Yeah.
Joyce Steer?
Yeah.
Patrick Freeman?
Yes.
Joseph Hicks?
Yes.
Robert Hough?
Yes.
Speaker, you have fifteen in favor, zero against.
Fifteen in favor, zero against, that motion is adopted. Congratulations, Ms. Mouse. TR, TR twenty one dash one, two, eight, a tribal resolution of the Muscogee Creek Nation, establishing tribal membership in the National Congress of American Indians, sponsored William Low.
Speaker, make a motion to adopt.
Representative Low made a motion to adopt TR twenty one, one, two, eight. Do I have a second?
Second.
Second by Representative Hicks. Discussion. Discussion. Hearing none, voice vote, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All who same time. TR twenty one, one, two, nine. A tribal resolution of the Muscogee Creek Nation, authorizing the Principal Chief to execute a fire certification, certification of compliance with USDA QSA program for segregation of cattle material prohibited from animal feeding with value for proteins, Inc., sponsored Robert Hough.
Motion to adopt.
Representative Huff made a motion to adopt TR twenty one, one, two, nine. Do I have a second?
Second.
Signated by Representative Jennings. Discussion. Any discussion? Hearing none, voice vote, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
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 All who same time. The motion is adopted. TR twenty one dash one, three, zero. A tribal resolution of the Muscogee Creek Nation, authorizing the Principal Chief to execute a one oh five, a lease agreement with the United States Department of Interior Bureau of Indian Affairs for the benefit of the Citizenship Office, sponsored James Jennings. Speaker, make a motion to adopt. Representative Jennings made a motion to adopt TR twenty one dash one, three, zero. Do I have a second?
Second.
Second by Representative McHenry. Discussion. Hearing none, voice vote, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All who same time. TR twenty one dash one, three, one. A tribal resolution of the Muscogee Creek Nation, authorizing the Principal Chief to execute an amendment to the twenty nineteen, twenty twenty one funding agreement with the United States Department of Interior Bureau of Indian Affairs, sponsored James Jennings. Speaker, make a motion to adopt. Representative Jennings made a motion to adopt TR twenty one dash one, three, one. Do I have a second?
Robert Hough, seconds.
Second by Representative Hough. Any discussion? Any discussion? Hearing none, voice vote, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
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 All who same time. The motion is adopted. TR twenty one, one, three, two. A tribal resolution of the Muscogee Creek Nation, removing all members of the One Fire Holding Company LLC Board of Directors, sponsored William Low, co-sponsored Lucian Tiger the third, Adam Jones the third.
You're gonna make a motion to adopt.
Second, Low made a motion to adopt TR twenty one, one, three, two, designated by Representative Tiger. Any discussion? Any discussion?
Speaker.
Go ahead, Representative Scott.
Thank you, sir. I just want to ask the Attorney General the impacts of this legislation going forward with the, with the board agreement that's in place that created the One Fire LLC and all of the signature authorities and the outstanding agreements that we have, please.
Attorney General. What, what's your question exactly, Mr. Scott? What the impact is on these agreements?
Yes, why dissolve the board this way and not repeal in that legislation that created One Fire LLC?
Well, this is only a motion to, or TR to remove the board members, which is authorized under the operating agreement attached to NCA fourteen, zero, eight, zero. As far as the existing agreements go, I think, you know, the board, the One Fire is going to be obligated to honor those agreements until new leadership is formed up and organized. The agreements would have to be honored, I would expect. But I think it would just continue business as usual.
AG Wiley, Representative Scott.
Thank you, sir.
Any other discussion? Chief?
We discussed with the attorneys. I don't know, Joe or Rod's on there, but as of right now, we do not have signature for, for acting, Debbie, to do any signature. You know, if you want, Joe, Rod, you on the call?
Chief, this is Joe. I'm on. So.
Go ahead.
Okay, thank you, Chief. Speaker, members of the National Council, good morning. So, the operating agreement in five point one A requires that, that for removal of a board member, that there be a reason applicable to a civil officer being removed under section one dash, once or before Title thirty one, or that a violation of the nation's law or constitution has occurred. When I read the TR, there was an, so the support was, there was a question, I guess, about the fitness for the board members. But there was no removal provision that supported removal of the board members in compliance with the operating agreement. So, that, that's a concern. Because if there is no provision or removal, a reason provided, then the removal of the board members would be in violation of the operating agreement. As you know, One Fire was created under the Nation LLC Act, and it's a manager-managed LLC, separate from the nation. It's a legal entity that is governed by the operating agreement that the nation approved back in two thousand thirteen, providing for how, how the managers would, would run the business. So, if the board members are removed, I mean, that, that is within the authority of the tribe to do so, but it would have to be in compliance with the operating agreement. And I, you know, based on what's in the TR, I don't see that there was any support for the reasoning behind removal, removal of the board. Also, there's a concern that if all the board is removed, that there is no manager in place for, for One Fire. Because to, to replace the manager, it would have to be in compliance with the operating agreement as well. So, unless the council is trying to replace these board members with new members in accordance with the operating agreement, then basically you would leave One Fire without a manager in place and without authority to sign checks or conduct any other business for One Fire until a new board is put in place. So, those are my concerns. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Williams, Chief.
Thank you. You know, the sponsor, haven't had a chance to reach out to him, but I went here Tuesday night, and this was presented before the meeting. I know in the past, it's been told that I haven't been communicating with the council, and I feel that I hadn't been doing the best I could, but I just feel that I should be given that same respect. I never did receive a call or, or aware of any post of these legislations, and we have been working on combining M and B E board and the One Fire board. I did send a summary to the speaker. Hopefully, that will send out to everyone where we combine both boards and just create one board. There were some issues I had to work out as far as some security clearance and Muscogee International, that both attorneys from each board get together and try to figure, figure out how to work that out. But I do wish I had some type of communication, this was coming up. We're still in the process of trying to combine both, or both boards to see what would be the best way. I know they've had several meetings together, both boards, to. create, come up with a plan on how to reorganize this and you know, it's not going to happen overnight, but it appears, and this was also a recommendation from the Muscogee Reservation Board when they have their committee to actually combine one board instead of we have multiple boards out there over these businesses, but just have one. Kind of wish we had a little bit more time. I believe we can make this work, you know, but definitely Representative Low or Chairman Low, did you ever get with the board about this as well?
No, sir, I did not.
So neither the board or myself was aware of this. Representative Low?
Right, sir. I know there's other legislation to move the entity underneath the Commerce Department. But in doing so, we needed to dissolve this board.
As said before, was there, what were the reasons in removing the board?
Speaker, Adam Jones.
Just say it, Representative Jones.
Thank you.
Representative Low?
Yes, Speaker, yeah. I know my comment was that there was little to no growth in their performance since I've been the chair of the BF&J for the past one year and ten months. And I would defer to Representative Jones. He had some other comments during the BF&J session or the planning session when we discussed this. And several other councils as well.
Thank you, Representative Low. Representative Jones?
Thank you, Speaker. Chief, we reached out to you three weeks ago. We're not wanting to combine the board. I don't know why we want to keep the board. Scott McCoy's looking for business, doing business with the nation with gaming as well, which is a conflict of interest. Secondly, Robert Everman, who was trying to tell you about Robert Everman not doing his job as far as going back to Seal Coat Company, paying the gentleman a bonus, not checking up on the company as to do it, no confidence in Robert Everman, they paid him a severance pay of thirty-one thousand dollars. So, you know, I don't see that the board's doing a good job at all. And it's time to do a revamp. It's not time to combine the board. Let's do away with the board. There's other things on there as well. Businesses have failed and failed underneath this board. And it's time to look at not combining, moving this board a different or moving this business, this entity a different way. Thank you.
Thank you, Representative Jones. Representative Tiger?
Thank you, Speaker. Chief, when we did have that meeting several weeks back, you know, I made the comment that I felt it would be better to go under the Secretary of the Nation because Ms. Branson Thomas had previous experience as being a board member to help get this cleared up because I don't feel like it would be a good thing at this time to put it under MNB because MNB has really no idea of what's going on with One Fire. Also, you have, you know, Ms., your chief of staff, Ms. Rebus, her comment was if it was to go under the Secretary of the Nation and it would be too much, it would became too much for Secretary Branson Thomas that she would put another employee in there to help her, assist her in this, and it's just for you know, this is combining both pieces of legislation, but the follow-up legislation in regards to Mr. Williams' comments puts this under the Secretary of the Nation. And right now, it's the board and majority of the council consensus is, even when we were speaking at that meeting, you know, how do you give these bonuses when there's hardly any money coming back to the nation from the supposed income that they have? And if you look at the audit, you know, the audit shows that they lost two million, twenty-eight thousand for twenty nineteen, lost twenty-five thousand, eight hundred forty-five for twenty twenty. Then it goes back to, again, you had the Seal Coat Company. That gentleman was given a bonus and he was out while he was working, found out that he was hustling up, basically hustling up work for his own self, for his own business that he had on the side. Also, we had the former CEO, which is Mr. Robert Everman. His wife was brought in over the Seal Company. Now, I believe the latest numbers on that Seal Coat Company, it's a hundred and fifteen thousand red so far for this year. And there's a lot of things that go to this, and in my opinion, it's long overdue. It's something that we as council should have done three or four years ago. You know, I've visited Representative Huff about this as well. It just hasn't performed like the council and the executive branch had hoped. You know, the intent of this was to provide jobs to citizens, and I don't see where that has happened very often at all. There's a lot of changes that have been made. You've gone through different members. You know, we talked about the tax credits. The tax credits on the council house, I know that cost us a lot of money on that. You know, and I know there's still some tax credit incentives out there right now. But we also had to remember that the gentleman that's overseeing, that we're doing these tax credits with, was brought in by Mike Payne. And we see the issues that we had with Mike Payne. So, Chief, that's why I feel that it's time to do something sooner than later on this, because like I said, I feel we're three, possibly four years behind on doing something on this. Thank you, Speaker.
Thank you, Representative Tiger, which, you know, we kind of voted the same in the very beginning. That was my thoughts when it was created, that we were supposed to create business, provide jobs for citizens. And we're not a bank, you know, and that's what the previous board and the previous CEO, that's the way they that's the way they done this deal. And, you know, I was against it myself. And that's why I think if we just recreate or reorganize it to command both of them, if possible, and we should have come up with a plan. And I was not aware of the bonus to after the fact. And I'm in disagreement with that myself. But needless to say, this is where we're at. I'm willing to work with this. As you know, you know, we put a lot on the Secretary of the Nation and that's what the thoughts were to bring someone in to manage, to manage it. But that's, but, you know, my whole thing is as far as putting all these boards together, I had just a couple of calls, not a whole lot, but some of the boards are kind of concerned now, are we next? You know, if they're not happy with our performance, they're going to do away with the whole board. And I told them that's not the case. This is totally different, but there is some fear about that, of how much, you know, both branches may try to try to dissolve each board. I definitely don't want to do that. That's why they're putting those places put in those boards to do their job, you know, and I just wish that I was, it was brought to my attention, these two legislations was going to come up. I think we can work these out, but so it was been our discussion before when I was on the council, try to take the politics out of any situations in the past where, oh, it was want to our attention as council members that you did have some time to get involved with One Fire. Definitely don't want to do that in the future, but, you know, they do have a responsibility. Each board member had to have a responsibility to do their job on these, that serve on these boards. But, I mean, we'll do best we can. As you did say, it was March.
Yes, sir.
I'd say we can just look at it, see what we can work with, but I just request that in the future, if the council representative is going to submit legislations, that they will communicate with the executive branch.
Thank you, Chief.
Representative Tiger? Thank you, Speaker. Thank you, Chief. And also, the reason my thought process after the meetings we had is moving this under the Secretary of the Nation. Just for that short time period, that would help transition if that's you're so choosing to go to MNB just because Ms. Branson is familiar with how One Fire works, with the tax credit, so on and so forth. I just felt that that would be an easier transition. It's just turn around and move it to MNB. And again, I'm just my, me personally, I'm just not happy with how the board has performed over the last several years, not just what's happened in the last month, but in the last several years, because it's continued, continued to stay in the red you know, this entire time. There's just been a lot of bad investments on behalf of the CEOs, previous CEOs in the boards. Also, you know, I don't, I'm not sure if Mr. Everman received a bonus the first time, but Manix Barnes, when he, when he was here, he received a fifty thousand dollar bonus. Like I said, I don't, I can't state that Mr. Everman didn't receive that. But again, I don't, I don't understand how we're giving bonuses when we're still in the red all the time. So that's, that's where I am coming from in my stance of moving, dissolving the board, putting it under the Secretary of the Nation. And in that six months till the end of March twenty twenty-two, if it does pass and if you do sign off on it, that would give MBE, if that's the course of action that the administration thinks we need to go in, that would give them time to understand the tax credit, so on and so forth.
I guess just one, one thing Joe's on here. Joe, is there any legalities of putting this under the Secretary of the Nation?
Thank you, Chief. So, can I just follow up with Mr. Tiger's concern? One also, one thing for the council to consider as well is, you know, we've done, One Fire currently has business obligations and interests through contracts that were approved by the board and in accordance with the operating agreement. There's also concern about the nation's future business interests and relationships for other outside parties who may want to do business with the nation. The whole purpose of One Fire, when it was created, was to develop a business arm of the nation separate from the government and to try to keep tribal politics out of the, of business affairs. And that's why the operating agreement says that the board will run One Fire. And the board may be removed, but it's going to have to be for cause. So we didn't want council or the tribe to simply remove board members on a whim. There had to do, it would have to be a process. And that process is in place through the operating agreement. And for those who want to do business with the nation, they would want to see stability in our, in our business abilities and how we conduct business separate from tribal politics. So the concern here also is not only with the current obligations, but how we're going to look in the future when we try to attract investors and people to do business with us. They don't want, they don't want to come and do business with our entities if they can simply be dissolved on a whim. So that's one concern. The other concern about moving it to the Secretary of the Nation is that's not a process that's provided in the operating agreement. The operating agreement says the manager will be the board. So if, I mean, think about it. Secretary of the Nation is an employee of Creek Nation. One Fire is a separate legal entity. So this is almost like requiring a nation employee to be associated or employed with another legal entity, which is, you know, kind of inappropriate as well. But, but if the Secretary of the Nation were put in place of the board, there is nothing in the operating agreement that provides for the ability of the Secretary of the Nation as an individual to do any kind of business. The operating agreement specifically says that a majority of the board would make the decisions on behalf of the board for these managerial tasks and duties. So again, I mean, there is, if the tribe wishes to make changes at One Fire, there is a way to do that. You know, one is to replace the board immediately with a new board. Or maybe amend the operating agreement to provide for a mechanism of putting it under a managerial authority of one person, if that's going to be the choice. But the way this TR and this NCA is created, in my view, it creates more problems. And it's not in compliance with the operating agreement or the tribe's own LLC act. So I would just, my recommendation would be if there's going to be a change, that maybe we do this in a more structured fashion. Thank you.
Rod, I don't know if that's him or not.
Yeah. Chief, thank you. Speaker, national representatives. I think that if you want to change the way the board is structured, you also have to look at amending NCA twenty dash zero, zero, seven, which is what created One Fire LLC. And I think that it's important that we either comply with that ordinance as it was enacted, which requires a five-member board, or that the National Council enacts an amendment to that ordinance that allows the transfer of the board's authority to someone else, whether it be the Secretary of the Nation or otherwise. I just, I just think there's an additional step that's necessary. Thank you, Chief. Thank you, Speaker.
Mr. Wiley, your comments to those two responses?
Well, you know, I heard what was said in the planning meeting on Tuesday night, and I do agree that there's a need to make changes based on what was said, based to the waste and the loss that's going on with One Fire. To the point of a reason under five-point-one-point-A, I agree. I think it would be cleaner and better if we added one of the reasons for removing the officers to be in compliance with the rules of removing officers of the nation. It is in the operating agreement and although the National Council can remove by tribal resolution, I think it would be much better for the council to step back, take a breath and reform this TR on removal. TR twenty-one, one-thirty-two, and give a reason for these removals. And I think, I agree with what council has said, the transition would be smoother if we took a breath and stepped back on this whole thing and organized it a little better before we move forward. I understand the need to act quickly and promptly. It should have been done several years ago, but I don't think we should rush into anything. And I think it would be better if we, we took a step back for just a second and reevaluated. Those are my comments.
Thank you, Ms. Wiley. Representative Tiger?
Thank you, Speaker. So, back to the comments again, as in reasons for removal. We can give seven million reasons for removal on this. That's the fix that needs to be done in everyone's opinion. I would like to request that that be done next week, and I would feel that we need to have an emergency session on this because, again, it's three to four years past time to dissolve the board, to do something different with One Fire, to move it in a different direction. And that needs to be done immediately, in my opinion. And that's something I would like to ask that if this legislation is postponed, that we do get the legislation as it needs to be, so that everyone is in agreeance. But definitely the board needs to be resolved. I'd like to request that this is postponed, that we have an emergency session next week to address this. Thank you, Speaker.
Thank you, Representative Tiger. Chief, you?
They do have a meeting next Wednesday. So we'll be all right for the following. That way we can get with them, give them the whole update, get everything clean, both legislations and One Fire board has a meeting scheduled to get the
So, but my, my concern is, Chief, I just feel it's time that we get together as elected officials and do the legislation just to get the board removed and another, is that what you're saying? We're gonna?
I say we'll work on it together, yeah.
Any other discussion? Thank you, sir. So, Chief, in our meeting three, four weeks ago, whenever it was, it was brought up about Mr. Everman and Manix Barnes and their issues with Western Hides and we asked that board terminating. And, you know, they Mr. McCoy, more or less, you know, he didn't, they wouldn't. But in that meeting at the end, Mr. McCoy made a statement. He says, "I gotta go. I have a real job to do." I didn't appreciate that. If he doesn't have time to be on the board, you know, if he needs to go his own way. And so, and then the board comes along and they get rid of Mr. Everman, but they pay him a bonus. So that's not only Mr. McCoy, that's the whole board that includes him. So that's my issue. Thank you.
I understand, heard that comment as well. But, you know, when I was council rep, I had a job too. But we always, always trying to work that together, and I think it's his tone of voice, that's what he was saying. I have a real job, but, you know, we have a lot of boards who have a job to sell. But I think serving on this board is, I don't want to say volunteer, but take time out of their job to do it, but I think it just, choice of words, I would say it. Like I said, I wasn't in agreement with the bonus myself till I heard after the fact. Because y'all heard my opinion, the same line with National Council. Um, because y'all heard my opinion, uh, same line with National Council. Uh, we just need, need to move forward to, uh, it's not in direction that we all thought it was going to be. We're there to create businesses and employ citizens. I mean, that's how my whole, in the very beginning, when we created that One Fire Board, the holding, and I, I totally agree.
Thank you, Speaker. Thank you, Representative, thank you, sir. Uh, Representative Low, go ahead.
Speaker, I'd like to make a motion to postpone this legislation until the next emergency session.
Second. Okay, motion on the floor now is made by Representative Low to postpone until emergency session? The motion on the floor is to postpone indefinitely, seconded by Representative Tiger. Discussion. Any discussion? Here you go, roll call vote, please.
Bill Low?
Yes.
Anna Marshall? Yes. Charles McHenry?
Yes.
Tom Senior Hola Osborne?
Yeah.
Darryl Proctor?
Yes.
Mark Randolph?
Yes.
Travis Scott?
Yes.
Lucian Tiger?
Yes.
Mary Crawford?
Yeah.
Joyce Steer?
Yeah.
Patrick Freeman?
Yes.
Joseph Hicks?
Yes.
Robert Heft?
Yes.
James Jennings?
Yes.
Adam Jones?
Yes.
Speaker, you have 15 in favor, zero against.
15 in favor, zero against. That motion passes. PA 41-099, the law of the Muskogee Creek Nation, amending MCNCA, Title 36, Chapter 3, entitled Motor Vehicle Tax and License Code, sponsors Wheelload.
Speaker, make a motion to adopt.
Representative Low made a motion to adopt NCA 21-099, last second, second, seconded by Representative Tiger. Discussion. Any discussion? Here you go, roll call vote, please.
William Low?
Yes.
Anna Marshall?
Yes.
Charles McHenry?
Yes.
Tom Senior Hola Osborne?
Yeah.
Darryl Proctor?
Yes.
Mark Randolph?
Yeah.
Travis Scott?
Yes.
Lucian Tiger?
Yes.
Mary Crawford?
Yeah.
Joyce Steer?
Yeah.
Patrick Freeman?
Yes.
Joseph Hicks?
Yes.
Robert Heft?
Yes.
James Jennings?
Yes.
Adam Jones?
Yes.
Speaker, you have 15 in favor, zero against.
15 in favor, zero against. That motion is adopted. NCA 21-100, the law of Muskogee Creek Nation, amending MCNCA, Title 48, subsection 2-102, entitled tribal workers' benefit advisory council membership, sponsors Wheelload.
Speaker, I make a motion to adopt.
Representative Low made a motion to adopt NCA 21-100. Do I have a second? Seconded by Representative Hicks. Discussion. Discussion. Here you go, roll call vote, please.
William Low?
Yes.
Anna Marshall?
Yes.
Charles McHenry?
Yes.
Tom Senior Hola Osborne?
Yeah.
Darryl Proctor?
Yes.
Mark Randolph?
Yes.
Travis Scott?
Yes.
Lucian Tiger?
Yes.
Mary Crawford?
Yeah.
Joyce Steer?
Yes.
Patrick Freeman?
Yes.
Joseph Hicks?
Yes.
Robert Heft?
Yes.
James Jennings?
Yes.
Adam Jones?
Yes.
Speaker, you have 15 in favor, zero against.
15 in favor, zero against. That motion is adopted. NCA 21-101, the law of Muskogee Creek Nation, authorizing the expenditure of funds awarded from the U.S. Department of Health and Human Services Administration for Children and Families, American Rescue Plan Act 2021, endemic emergency assistance funds for the Muskogee Creek Nation, Canada Program, sponsors Lucian Tigers, are postponed to adopt. Representative Tiger made a motion to adopt NCA 21-101, last second, seconded by Representative Jennings. Discussion. Discussion. Here you go, roll call vote, please.
Lucian Tiger?
Yes.
Mary Crawford?
Yeah.
Joyce Steer?
Yeah.
Patrick Freeman?
Yes.
Joseph Hicks?
Yes.
Robert Heft?
Yes.
James Jennings?
Yes.
Adam Jones?
Yes.
William Low?
Yes.
Anna Marshall?
Yes.
Charles McHenry?
Yes.
Tom Senior Hola Osborne?
Yeah.
Darryl Proctor?
Yes.
Mark Randolph?
Yeah.
Travis Scott?
Yes.
Speaker, you have 15 in favor, zero against.
15 in favor, zero against. That motion is adopted. NCA 21-102, the law of Muskogee Creek Nation, authorizing the expenditure of Department of Health and Human Services Administration for Children and Families, ANA, American Rescue Plan Act, emergency native language fund for benefit as a Muskogee Language Department, sponsors Lucian Tigers, are postponed to adopt. Representative Tiger made a motion to adopt NCA 21-102, seconded by Representative McHenry. Discussion. Discussion. Here you go, roll call vote, please.
Lucian Tiger?
Yes.
Mary Crawford?
Yes.
Joyce Steer?
Yeah.
Patrick Freeman?
Yes.
Joseph Hicks?
Yes.
Robert Heft?
Yes.
James Jennings?
Yes.
Adam Jones?
Yes.
William Low?
Yes.
Anna Marshall?
Yes.
Charles McHenry?
Yes.
Tom Senior Hola Osborne?
Yeah.
Darryl Proctor?
Yes.
Mark Randolph?
Yes.
Travis Scott?
Yes.
Speaker, you have 15 in favor, zero against.
15 in favor, zero against. That motion is adopted. NCA 21-103, the law of Muskogee Creek Nation, authorizing expenditure of cares act funds to supplement the tribal burial, food, or annual programs, social services departments, fiscal year 2021 budget, sponsors Lucian Tigers, third, co-sponsors Mark Randolph. Motion to adopt. Representative Tiger made a motion to adopt NCA 21-103, last second. Seconded by Representative Jennings. Discussion. Any discussion? Here you go, roll call vote, please.
Lucian Tiger?
Yes.
Mary Crawford?
Yeah.
Joyce Steer?
Yeah.
Patrick Freeman?
Yes.
Joseph Hicks?
Yes.
Robert Heft?
Yes.
James Jennings?
Yes.
Adam Jones?
Yes.
William Low?
Yes.
Anna Marshall?
Yes.
Charles McHenry?
Yes.
Tom Senior Hola Osborne?
Yeah.
Darryl Proctor?
Yes.
Mark Randolph?
Yes.
Travis Scott?
Yes.
Speaker, you have 15 in favor, zero against.
15 in favor, zero against. That motion is adopted. NCA 21-104, the law of Muskogee Creek Nation, approving a continuing budget ordinance and providing for appropriations and operation for expenditure for fiscal year 2022, sponsors Lucian Tigers, third. Motion to adopt. Representative Tiger made a motion to adopt NCA 21-104, last second. Seconded by Representative Hicks. Discussion. Discussion. Here you go, roll call vote, please.
Lucian Tiger?
Yes.
Mary Crawford?
Yeah.
Joyce Steer?
Yeah.
Patrick Freeman?
Yes.
Joseph Hicks?
Yes.
Robert Heft?
Yes.
James Jennings?
Yes.
Adam Jones?
Yes.
William Low?
Yes.
Anna Marshall?
Yes.
Charles McHenry?
Yes.
Tom Senior Hola Osborne?
Yeah.
Darryl Proctor?
Yes.
Mark Randolph?
Yeah.
Travis Scott? Travis Scott?
Yes.
Speaker, you have 15 in favor, zero against.
15 in favor, zero against. That motion is adopted. NCA 21-105, the law of Muskogee Creek Nation, temporarily transferring duties of the One Fire Holding Company LLC Board to Secretary of the Nation and Commerce, sponsors Lucian Tigers, third, co-sponsor Darryl Proctor, Joyce Steer, James Jennings, Patrick Freeman Jr., Joseph Hicks, William Low, Adam Tolda III, Mary Crawford, Charles McHenry, and Anna Marshall. Motion to adopt. Representative Tiger made a motion to adopt NCA 21-105, do I have a second?
Second.
Seconded by Representative Jennings. Discussion. Thank you, Speaker. This goes back and ties in again with the TR 21-132. Still the intent, uh, my intent is, like we discussed earlier with Chief, is to get something done su, much sooner than later, much like Chief, I just, we're sitting at the table. You know, it's definitely something we need to address immediately because again, there's, there's too many things that have gone awry with this, uh, One Fire ever since the inception. It's continually lost money every year, hasn't been in the black. I don't know that you can get it in the black, and I feel that there also needs to be a forensic audit done, especially after this last uh, CEO that we had. You know, it's definitely a conflict, in my opinion. When you hire your wife to oversee our seal coat company through the CEO, you hire your wife. It's, it's just definitely a conflict that should never happen. And again, that goes back to another, in my opinion, area by the board. The board should never allow the CEO to hire his wife to run one of our departments. So uh, again, I wanted this, uh, made this motion, basically so we could have some discussion on that. But I believe it's the majority of the council support this. I also do believe that Chief, and I don't know if Second Chief's on the call or not, but would support. I mean, we have to get something done on this, in my opinion, immediately. Because again, we're without a CEO. We've had five CEOs, I believe, in seven years, eight years. I guess it's the eighth year. December will be year number eight. It'll be completed, and I just feel that, you know, we need to address this now. And hopefully we can get that done through the emergency session like we discussed earlier. Uh, with that said, if nobody has any comments, Speaker, see if anybody has any comments. Anybody have any comments on this? I'll figure with that being said, I'm making a motion to postpone until uh, next month's meeting, please. Representative Tiger made a motion to postpone until next month's meeting. Do I have a second? Let me, let me change that. Speaker, I mean, I mean, amend that motion to postpone indefinitely. Representative Tiger made a motion to postpone indefinitely. Do I have a second? Seconded by Representative Jennings. Discussion. Any discussion? Here you go, roll call vote, please.
Lucian Tiger?
Yes.
Mary Crawford?
Yeah.
Joyce Steer?
Yeah.
Patrick Freeman?
Yes.
Joseph Hicks?
Yes.
Robert Heft?
Yes.
Lucy Jennings?
Yes.
Adam Jones?
Yes.
William Low?
Yes.
Anna Marshall?
Yes.
Charles McHenry?
Yes.
Tom Senior Hola Osborne?
Yeah.
Darryl Proctor?
Yes.
Mark Randolph?
Yeah.
Uh, Representative Randolph, can you recast your votes, please?
Yeah.
Travis Scott?
Yes.
Speaker, you have 15 in favor, zero against.
15 in favor, zero against. That motion is adopted. Move the order of business. Next item on the agenda is other business. Is there any other business?
Yeah, Speaker, Adam Jones.
Hey, Representative Jones.
Speaker, it's a question for Chief. Chief, last month, I asked you about um, Carmen Tecumseh Williams about being reprimanded for misconduct at River Spirit. Did you get with Ms. Carmen about that, Chief?
Uh, Representative Jones, I did get with uh, the uh, captain member, Miranda, and she did have a discussion with them and uh, wrote up a uh, plan of action for her, and also gave her a policy of uh, ethic, or whatever you call it. And uh, I let her handle that, uh, since she reports to her. Uh, she's, she's addressed that issue. Thank you, Chief.
Any other?
Speaking? Not, not a question, just a comment. Um, I did text um, Kelly up here. The three legislation that Representative Tiger sponsored NCA 21-102, 103, 104. Is it okay to get that soon as possible? Does that does it affect their departments? I should warn you, the three instances.
You want it today or Monday?
If it's, we're on Monday. Or at least Tuesday morning, I don't know if there's nothing going on.
Okay.
Very honest. It's good. Make sure you stay over.
Any other business? Here you go, announcements. Any announcements from council?
Tom Flex is closed Monday.
Tom Flex is closed Monday, holiday.
Do you want me to address that? I mean, it's, yeah, it was, it was too close to change, you know, so we just left it the same on Monday instead of moving it up to have everyone a four-day weekend and Labor Day. So we just decided, go ahead, just leave it on Monday because a lot of employees already had vacations turned in and doing one of these more difficult ones.
Second day parade today, right? Second day parade? Any other announcements? Here you go, if you're taking a vote to adjourn, someone. Representative Tiger made a motion to adjourn, do I have a second?
Sir.
Seconded by Representative McHenry, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All polls, same side. Second Chief Beaver, are you online?
Yes, sir. Can you hear me?
Sir, would you do our meditation for us, please?
Absolutely. I apologize if there's some background noise. I'm currently at Riverwalk right now doing a, participating in a suicide awareness, prevention awareness walk.
Okay.
And so, so it's uh, it's a little, little loud out here, so I tried to find a uh, a little quieter place. So forgive me if there's a lot of background noise. All right, you ready?
Yes, sir.
All right, if you want, bow your heads, let's pray. We heavenly Father, Lord, thank you for this day of giving us, Lord, and thank you, Lord, for this time. You allowed us to come together as leaders of this nation, Lord. And Lord, I just ask that you guide our actions, you guide our thoughts throughout this day, Lord, and Lord, that our actions are in line with what uh, you have, Lord, and, and that uh, our, our actions in line with your will, Lord. And so, Lord, I just ask that you give us strength and give us courage, Lord, throughout this day, Lord. Just promote your goodwill, Lord, and promote how you want us to be, Lord, and be with our thoughts, our actions, and our words, Lord. And be with those that are hurt right now, the families that need your help right now, Lord. Whether it be through COVID, Lord, whether it be through suicide, whether it be through mental illness, Lord. What I just asking, you be with those families, Lord, and guide them and help them, Lord, and just give them the comfort that they need, Lord. But again, I thank you, Lord, for all that you've done for us, Lord. Amen. My prayer. Amen.
All right, thank you, Chief. Me, Mr. 1111.